Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a report out of closed session proceeding. In closed session by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to accept the resignation classified employee number seven, six, zero, 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 six, six, four, in lieu of termination. Uh, we need a motion to adopt our agenda please.
Okay.
Second. Data and baby, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Of course, here is my goal. Uh, first item is public comment for non-agenda items. So I have the cards in here and the first card, it has eight names on it, to speak of Non-toxic Laguna Beach. So, are you pointing an order on this? Christine?
Eglisna?
Is it Christine?
Kristi Engel.
Yeah. Is there any particular?
Here.
Yes, please.
I'm Kristi Engel, a Laguna resident, mother to two young boys, and the founder of Non-toxic Laguna Beach. Non-toxic Laguna Beach is a local grassroots organization with 225 supporters, and our mission is to formalize policies to reflect a chemical-free land management approach in our city parks and school grounds. We're here tonight to ask for two things. First, the district currently has an open bidding process until May 3rd for its grounds maintenance services, and it has asked for traditional bids and organic bids, and we're asking your support in approving one of the organic bids. Second, we're also asking for your support in adopting a progressive pest management plan for school-owned property. This will ensure going forward, only bids for chemical-free preventative landscaping methods will be solicited and no toxic chemicals will be used. In your handout that we have delivered, you'll find a draft proposed resolution that we put together as a starting point. Pesticides are toxic chemicals, poisons created to kill. They're dangerous for all living things. When we use pesticides, we impact our children that play on the grass, who are especially vulnerable due to their developing organs. We impact our surfers and our swimmers that spend hours in the ocean where all the chemicals run off. And even us healthy adults, the teachers and the staff at the school are impacted from the exposure too. In the handouts you received, you'll see that Roundup, also known as glyphosate, was used in all four of the schools in 23 of the last 24 months, for which we have data, which is 2016 and 2017. Many of our neighbors have already made changes, and we know that Laguna is such a progressive town, and we really care about our students and our environment, that we know we can make the change here too. In 2016, the city of Irvine became Orange County's first city to go chemical-free. The city was then followed by the Irvine Unified School District, who decided to adopt fully organic landscaping practices. We recently coordinated a meeting with Jeff Dixon and Ryan Data, the director of facilities here in Laguna, with the staff from the Irvine Unified School District, so we could share best practices and learn from some of the things they've done. Additional neighbors taking action, in 2017, the Newport Mesa Unified School District discontinued the use of non-organic pesticides for weed abatement. In 2017, the city of San Juan Capistrano became Orange County's second city to go non-toxic. Tustin, Huntington Beach, and Costa Mesa are also currently running pilot programs, and the Tustin Unified School District ceased using Roundup in 2016 and has since made the ban official. There are so many amazing things that we do in this district for the environment, for our students, that let's add this one more thing to the list of amazing things we do and join all of these other cities and districts in making the change.
Lisa Schroeder?
Hello. My name is Lisa Gottinbach. I'm actually a cancer research scientist, and I own a laboratory in Orange County. I live here in Laguna Beach with my two sons and my husband. As a scientist, I'm aware of the discussions that Kristi Engel was calling glyphosate because it is linked to problems such as cancer, cognitive dysfunction, and behavioral issues. In 2015, the World Health Organization announced that glyphosate is a probable carcinogen. So what is this? Basically, it's Roundup. It's a herbicide used to kill weed in grass and is commercially available. So I wanted to give you some publicly available information on pesticides and links to cancer. The most common child with cancer is acute lymphocytic leukemia, or ALL, and it is diagnosed between the ages of three and seven. A recent study analyzed urine samples from children and their mothers, and detectable pesticides were found in 99% of the samples, of which organophosphate similar to glyphosate were as high as in children with ALL. Other studies have shown that parental exposure to pesticides contributed to a high risk of childhood lymphoma and birth defects. In a review of 32 papers on non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, most were found to have an elevated risk due to pesticides. Here's a deal, if you do a quick Google search, you'll find a lot of conflicting and controversial research out there. To be honest, randomized controlled clinical trials on the health effects of pesticide exposure cannot be ethically performed, so we're limited to observational studies. While this debate continues, I believe that as a scientist and a mom, pesticides should be looked at in our schools. Thank you.
Laura Linton-Meyer?
My name is Laura Linton-Meyer. I'm a lifelong Laguna Beach native and local business owner. Almost six years ago, I opened the doors to Roots, the beauty underground, a non-toxic cosmetic shop and organic hair salon located in the Lumberyard Plaza downtown. And I feel like today we're asking ourselves, what are the unhealthy business practices going on in all of our different industries? My particular industry is cosmetics, all things beauty and self-care. All it takes is 26 seconds for the chemicals in your personal care products to enter your bloodstream. Ingredients that are known to cause harm are being put into our personal care products: mercury, placenta, lead acetate, pesticides, phthalates, hydroquinone, nanoparticles, formaldehyde, just to name a few. The effects of these toxins in beauty products are hormone disruption, damage to the endocrine and reproductive system, skin damage and disease, negative allergic reactions, and links to cancer. I personally feel an ethical responsibility to make a positive impact in our community, therefore, all the products representative Roots are free of these toxic chemicals. My intention today is to encourage and inspire more of our local industry leaders to take an honest look at the statistics and understand that collectively, we can come up with natural alternatives and solutions to the challenges that pose a threat to our health and wellness.
Thank you. Ashley? I'm sorry.
Ballaker.
Ballaker, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ashley Ballaker. I am a Laguna Beach resident, and I am a air nose and throat physician who practices in Irvine. I see pediatric as well as adult patients, and more importantly, I'm a mom of two young boys, one of which will be attending the Laguna Beach Unified School District next year. So I have a personal interest in this as well. As a physician, children in particular, I see are much more susceptible to environmental exposures. They are still developing their nervous systems, as well as their endocrine systems, their kidneys and livers are underdeveloped, and their exposure to toxicity is going to be filtered at a lower rate, and they are going to absorb things at a higher rate because they have an increased intake of water, air, and as well as skin surface area with their exposures to the environment. For these reasons, I think when we're considering what our children are exposed to, more so even the way we consider for ourselves, it's better to take extra precautions. Lisa previously mentioned that there is a lot of conflicting evidence out there about some of these pesticides, and I think that's been true throughout history for a lot of things. I mean, we were just talking about DEET, used to be something we all sprayed for mosquitoes, and now we don't use that anymore because we've determined that it's detrimental. So I think as a physician, we oftentimes talk about risk and benefit of an intervention, and when there is a reasonable, safer alternative available that is equally effective, we go that route. And I think that is something we could consider here with use of organic practices in our landscaping for our school system. Thank you.
Hi, please.
Hello. Usually I would try to make a speech off the cuff, but such important information, and it's very stressful being in front of so many faces, I actually wrote it down, so I apologize for my looking down. My name is Blake Wheaton. I'm a 20-year Laguna Beach resident. I'm a mom of three Laguna Beach Unified School District students, ages eight to 13. I'm a regular volunteer at both Thurston and Top of the World in the classrooms, in the gardens, and for special events. I'm committed to living pesticide-free and eliminating any known dangers to myself and to my family within my control, and that's why I'm here. Through education and missteps, as we've said earlier, we're learning the error of our ways, that things that we thought were safe are not, and we're changing and improving based on this successful effort of learning through these mistakes. This has been of critical importance to me even since my own childhood. I grew up in front of an orange grove owned by Sunkist in El Toro. I remember the pesticide spraying for the fruit fly that they used to announce on the news when the airplanes would swoop down and spray over all of us. Back then, it was don't touch the trees, don't touch the ant spray, don't eat the poison cake for the rodents, stay inside when the pesticides are being dropped, so on and so forth. I think a lot of us that grew up in this area remember these things that were totally normal, and now we look back on them afraid of possibly what they might do to us in the future. We thought we were safer for these pesticides, the plants were protected from the dreaded bugs, the crops were saved, life could go on. Since then, my mother has had Hodgkin's disease. She has survived. My dad has dementia. He is continuing to survive, but it has critically impaired his ability to live daily life. My grandmother had leukemia. These are all known to be potentially caused by pesticides. These are studies that are not fake studies. This is real news, real science. What we did in the past has caused these deadly diseases. So surprisingly, we saved these plants, but we poisoned the people. Research is only now revealing this, but I think we all knew a little bit back then that it probably wasn't good for us. We were exposed, and now we're suffering the consequences. Pesticides have evolved to be in our lives now in invisible ways. That's why we're here as well. I don't want to take the chance to find out that what we're putting on the grass to keep it green or weedless has caused brain and developmental damage to the kids in our schools, that our schools are there to protect and nurture and educate. It's not worth the trade. Kids are poisoned every single time, if you ask me. We're part of an awakening. We have the power to make positive choices informed by real science. Schools are excited to teach kids about the earth, how we can save it, how we're interconnected, how we can work the land and reap the thrill of growing our own food. Kids throw away their carrots in their bags that I never I ball mom at Thurston, but if they grow it themselves, they can't wait to take a selfie and share it with their friends. We're growing children, we're encouraging sustainability, we're teaching conservation and responsible water management. So what does this all mean? Why are we here? We need to be accountable to these lessons, these that we're teaching.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Okay, time's up.
Time's up, so could you finish up?
No more teaching organic land management, pesticide-free gardening, water conservation, and recycling without practicing what we preach. Let's start at the schools.
Thank you. Can anybody miss her?
Oh, Hazel, it's Hazel, sorry.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Hazel Assar, and I am a current eighth grade student and Laguna Beach resident. I was given the opportunity to speak about a subject that I am very passionate about: the reduction of harmful toxins in our environment. Numerous school districts in California and across the country have voted to discontinue the use of Roundup on school grounds due to the hazardous health risks and growing links to cancer. State records reveal that Roundup was sprayed at all four Laguna Beach schools for nearly two years straight in 2016 and 2017. The trouble is, while Roundup is highly effective at killing weeds, it is also proving highly effective at killing us too, slowly but surely. Because of our still-developing organ systems, which are much more sensitive than fully-developed ones, us children are the most vulnerable to pesticides such as Roundup. Roundup has been proven to cause ADHD, Alzheimer's disease, autism, autoimmune disorders, respiratory illnesses, birth defects, cancer, depression, obesity, and many other illnesses. When we go outside at school, we are rolling in the toxic chemicals spray. We track the pesticides into our schools and homes, and they are left on our clothes long after the school day is done. I make the choice to eat foods grown without pesticides. Therefore, I should be given the right to spend my time in an environment where I am not breathing these harmful toxins daily. On a daily basis, we are already exposed to so many environmental toxins. Right now, youth of Laguna Beach PTA have an opportunity to significantly decrease the amount of harmful toxins that these students are exposed to on a daily basis. For the help of us students, please vote to stop using Roundup or any other toxic pesticides. If given the opportunity, I know that these students would vote to breathe the salty ocean breeze over cancer-causing chemicals. Thank you for your time.
Kristi Rayburn?
Hi, I'm Kristi. I'm a local Laguna Beach business person, happens to be the mother of 2.75 boys. All of whom are going to attend to Top of the World, and I have no reason to be crying right now, I apologize in advance. I am so proud to be a member of this extremely eco-conscious community, and I couldn't be more thankful to the school district for the many steps they have taken in this direction. I think our request today is just the logical next step in a path that you guys have already been following. There have been many studies performed on the impact of pesticides on unborn children. You guys heard a lot already, but recent data has shown that glyphosate, the active ingredient in Roundup, which we know that the school district's contractor has been using, can lead to adverse pregnancy outcomes, including shorter gestation times and lower birth weights, both of which are known to be risk factors for many health and/or neurodevelopmental problems over the course of an individual's life. Other scientific research shows that pesticide exposure during the in utero or gestational period has been linked to later childhood cancers, and over 10,000 American children a year aged 14 and under are diagnosed with cancers: leukemias, brain tumors, lymphomas. And studies have been linking these cancers with pesticide exposures. I could go on, but I know time is short. I'm not a physician or a scientist, but these studies seem pretty compelling to me. And the actions that Non-Toxic Laguna Beach is requesting today are pretty simple steps that are in line with this school district's goals and actions to date, and they're also something I believe this school district can afford. So as a pregnant mom, I should be thinking, I am thinking, about whether I took my prenatal vitamins today, how my two older sons are going to adjust to a baby in the house, and a lot of things along those lines. I don't want to be thinking about whether my sons mowled in the grass today and how that will impact my unborn baby. Thank you for hearing us, I really appreciate the time.
Allison, who's that?
Hushak, can you say it? And I have a friend here, I have many friends, but this is also Austin, and he likes to talk about runoff from time to time, so he may interrupt. But, so I am mom of Adrian, who's five and entering Top of the World. We, and I'm also a lawyer, and we have purposely worn green and selected April as the time to come speak to you guys because it's birth month, and the messaging is purposeful. So my conclusion for you guys tonight is that the staff of Laguna Beach School District is amazing. We've spent time with Jeff and Ryan, and they have great intentions. They do not, however, have the bandwidth or the time to monitor the third-party landscapers that we have to hire to manage our lands, and so implementing a formal policy would help them meet our goals of prohibiting some of these pesticides that are harmful to people. So, Austin, did you have anything to add, buddy?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Austin Engel, and he's five. Did you want to say something? Okay, go ahead.
When you would spray the toxic spray, when the rain comes, it can wash it down to the ocean, and then the animals in the ocean would die and get sick.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you so much for your time, and we'll exit the meeting so you can have an uninterrupted rest of your meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next card is from Michael Trotter. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on, excuse me. Sherry Morgan has two parts.
Did you guys have fun last Thursday? That was fun.
You indicated two topics: calendar and transparency.
Sherry Morgan, I'd like to address the calendar. As a calendar committee member, I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the process. It's been, it's been quite a journey from the first time it was attempted to this time. I think there was some interesting situations and some interesting comments that were made on Thursday that I was encouraged to see the communities make statements that I think had needed to be heard, honestly, with all due respect, by our administration, because I know that was one of the concerns, that as a committee member, I felt there could have been more thought of how reaction was going to be perceived, although I actually discussed it. And I think you guys did a great job of trying to take all that into consideration, and I think once the breakout happened, I think people were a lot more informed, and I think they handled the information a lot better, so I applaud you for how you've been handling the study sessions, because I think those are wonderful, and I think more people should attend them, because I think they have a better idea of it. I would encourage going forward, as you collect the data and have this data made, have the data that you're looking for with transportation, with students and so forth, to make that available as in accordance to the community. I think it's what they're looking for. There's a lot of information, a lot of dialogue on Nextdoor and some of the other on social media, wanting the information and wishing that they had had that going forward, so I would encourage you maybe to look at some of that, see how you might want to make that available. But I have to wonder if we need to look further at one of the issues, I know we're looking at the calendar and the stress level of the kids. Are we looking at all of the factors? You know, I have a student that took all APs, he was a junior national swimmer, and now he's in college, and I don't know if, looking back, if he would have said that exams were the only issue. We have a lot of issues, we have social emotional issues, we have social bullying, we have what the kids are doing in class on their personal computers, you know? Do we need to look at Chromebooks for everybody and being able to assume, being able to control what they're doing in class? I mean, I know kids can text on their computers, so if we take the phones away, are we keeping that possibility away from them during class time? I don't know if the calendar is the only issue that is driving the stress level of why tests need to be before Christmas. There are a lot of different parts. I would really encourage through, I know the social emotional committee is also working, which I am also honored to sit a part of, but I don't know if the calendar is the only issue that's driving the stress at Christmas or the stress over the break. There are a lot of problems that kids are facing, and as a district, I think it's our responsibility to give more effort to how we can help these kids, and it may not just be their exams.
Any others who wish to comment? I am not on the agenda.
Hi, my name's Howard Hillson. One thing I want to say is that, you know, when I worked in the federal government, I often observed about myself and my own organization that we were low-function. I would say, we can do better. I worked in the National Security Council on a treaty negotiation process, and it had been going on for 18 years, and I said, we can do better, and we worked at it, and I had a team of lawyers, said, we've got to become more highly-functioning, and we ended up wrapping up negotiations for two years. And the point is when, so if I say I think this board is low-functioning in a certain area, I'm not like being mean or about, it's not about personally, it's a sort of an analysis. And I agree with Sherry, I thought the study session was a really positive step forward. I saw some dynamics in the, in the study section that I thought were characteristic of a low-functioning process. You know, we got into a discussion of, well, is the facts and the information against the emotion? And so you're creating kind of a dichotomy, and let's not do a survey because we'll get emotion, and we know the facts, and you know, I support the board in creating a record and making a decision and stand by it, whether it's popular or not. But, you know, what I see going, you know, the last time the board did this, there was this incredible triangulation that took place between staff, the board, and the public, and you mitigated that a lot with this study session, it was really good, but there was still in the end, there was that triangulation going on. I would just say this, I think that it would mean a lot, you know, and this is why I keep saying, let's send the senior staff, and I'm not just talking about the superintendent, I mean, I think every year, somebody from senior staff should go to the Kennedy School of Government, to the senior management of government course, and do career development. That's not like sending them to, you know, detention or something, that's like career development, it's positive for their futures even when they leave here. And the thing about it is, I think when you're trying to bring the circles, instead of triangulation and having the board here, the staff here, and the public here, you're trying to bring those circles together, it would really mean a lot if the, for example, for me, if I know the teachers really are not happy with the current schedule and would like this schedule, that would mean a lot to me. If I knew the classified employees really weren't happy and wanted to, if I knew, and then again, we were talking about the facts, like the stress data and all that, I would just say this, I think it's headed in the right direction, but it's still got some triangulation going on, and I think that the survey is something that can and should be considered. And I'll end by saying this, what happens if, after everybody gets the facts and everybody decides what they think is right for the school, for the students, what happens if the community still doesn't like it? Well, that's okay, it's an unpopular decision, it's an unpopular decision, but it may be that it doesn't have to end up like that, and that if there's enough information about what all the stakeholders are really thinking, and I'll end by saying, using a surrogate committee sometimes increases the triangulation, but anyway, I'm over my time, I appreciate your patience and your attention.
Is there anyone else that wishes to comment? I'm going on the agenda. Okay, move on then, we have no more conditions, we will be moving to our student reports, I mean, our reports, and our persons are submitted.
President, if yours at the conclusion of our report might have the correspondence to be had. LBHS is currently on its way with campaigns for ASB elections. Candidates are promoting themselves with posters and school-wide speeches. Elections will be held this Thursday and Friday. The ninth grade presidential fitness testing will be held this Thursday and Friday during health and mobility periods. Next week has lots in store. Seniors will be having their capping gown pictures Thursday, April 26th. Link crew applications for freshman orientation are out this week and are due next Friday. Current juniors and sophomores are allowed to apply. The Spring Dance Show move is opening next Friday, April 27th. The first official Student Senate meeting is next Friday during advisory. Elected students from fourth-period classes will be attending. ASB is continuing to plan for prom and the pep assembly in mid-May. We will reveal the theme next Friday during break. LBHS will be holding a mental awareness week on April 30th to May 4th. Students are also preparing for the CASP and AP testing. On behalf of Mr. Neal, the Orange Coast spring season is winding down. Baseball, boys and girls swimming, boys golf, boys volleyball, and boys tennis are in contention for league championships. League victories have been a major factor in LBHS being placed in the Sunset League, where athletes will prepare for a higher level of competition. Softball has not only had an increase in players, but total victories have increased as well. Recently, the team took a trip to Catalina Island and defeated Avalon High School. Boys and girls track participated in the Steve Fontaine Track and Field Meet in Oregon. Boys and girls track participated in the Steve Fontaine Track and Field Meet in Oregon. Major victories all around, specifically the girls team placed first overall. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for your report. Labuca, her name?
Um, I appreciated what Howard had to say. Um, I wanted to clarify a little bit, we sent an email out to our members to clarify, because there has been some confusion, and I wanted to share that with you. I recognize that there's been confusion and some mixed messages in regards to the calendar committee and our negotiations process, so I wanted to address these and make some clarifications. Our negotiations team is made up of representatives from every site. We do our best to communicate and solicit information and interest from our members to best prepare for negotiations each year. When any group comes to us with an interest, we work to address their interests. We've addressed requests for sick leave bank, for equity and differential pay, for specialized case management time, et cetera. During negotiations last year, one of the questions that was brought forward by Labuca was concerning our calendar, whether or not the district was considering moving to start data. The district presented this to the school board, and the decision was made to form a committee to look at all calendar options. Um, then the committee was established. We, um, we have teachers on both sides of this issue, and recognize that this is a highly personal issue for many of them. We support each of you to our teachers, but we also encourage you to please assume best intentions as we all move forward in this inquiry process with all stakeholders. I really wanted to thank the district and also the school board. I feel like, um, it's not gonna be an issue where all of CSEA or all of the teachers are against it or for it, because I think all of us have vested interests in trying to do what's best for kids. And depending on where your kids are in life and what your concerns are for your specific child, your interest is going to be different. I think what we need to agree on, and I think you've done an amazing job in putting forth the message that we want to hear what everyone has to say. Um, that our interest from you and from us and from CSEA has always been to figure out what is the best thing for the kids. And we really appreciate, um, that leadership that you guys have shown in this case. We also, um, Sarah Harper and I attended the leadership summit meetings in San Diego this last weekend for all um, CTA leaders in this, this Southern California area, and we got a lot of good insights and direction and guidance there, um, moving forward positively, and we always come back re-energized, as you do when you go to those meetings, thinking, okay, great things can happen and we'll move forward as a unit. So again, thank you, and we look forward to taking this process as we do for almost every issue and figuring out what's gonna be best. We have teachers that have shared really positive feelings with me. I know it seemed like most of the negative showed up at the meeting, I think from parents and teachers, because they had a passion about it, but a lot of teachers have been having conversations in their classrooms with students, and a lot of teachers have emailed to say, hey, I think this is gonna be a great thing. So I think there's people on both sides of the issue, and it's great that they can all be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy?
Good evening. Um, first of all, to address the calendar. The one most important thing that I see in the process has been open, and everyone was given opportunity to select people from both associations, is that we're going through a process, and process requires change and information put forth. For CSEA particularly, there is not one calendar, but five calendars we're talking about, and so there's been lots of discussion with various members on how this would affect them. The bottom line, as they say in the world, is we're here to educate students and what's best for students. So with all of the comments that have been made with Mr. Hills and Ms. Morgan, is, yes, there's more than just testing. There is the whole social emotional child that we're dealing with. But supporting that child as we move forward is what's the best interest, and it's gonna take a lot of different things, but if it means that the calendar starts earlier, then so be it. So with CSEA here, I can't speak for everyone, but for the people that I have spoken to, yes, there are some people that go, wait, and I go, well, wait, we have kids. We have other districts that are doing things. So with that said, the process will unfold, and hopefully people will recognize the positive things that may come out of a change in the schedule. With that, we had a really fantastic professional development meeting with Ms. Winston and Ms. White and our representatives. And there's so many exciting things happening for CSEA and our classified staff at all levels, so I really want to address that. It's not, I, I've been on the bandwagon for instructional assistance, but I'm talking about every, from maintenance and operations, nutrition. So this is exciting and an opportunity for all of our members to really reap the benefits of working in a great district that we do work in. The other thing is, um, we are well onto negotiations. Um, it's interesting, interspace bargaining has become an interesting phenomenon, but we are moving forward with it, and I think we're reaching areas that we will sooner or later have some closure on, okay? And just a couple of things to keep in your mind, and you'll be notified. Of course, May is classified and teacher meek recognition, so when that gets announced. And in June, we will continue to have our recognition party at the high school. I've already, uh, told Jason A. over there that we do the party, uh, in his backyard. And we will be recognizing our classified employees and our surprise JEM award winner, which I get to select. Thank you very much.
Do we have representatives tonight from PTA's, school power boosters that have a report here? Maybe the new board members, and this are, what we're trying again to define is that these are our appointed committee reports.
So I attended the social emotional stakeholders committee. It was very fun. I appreciate that being included.
And it's so good. Well, we had one break in there, so it hasn't been. And had literally the break in there. You take councilment this month, and they are just, they wrapped up the job funds, and they also announced that, well, Jason and Lisa presented the whole program that they presented that night to that group in the morning, but they, they had also, the PTA's were going to send out reminders and meetings to all of their members, so they got a double notification of the Thursday night session. There's been not much, not many activities going on. So move to, go ahead.
First, um, thanks to my staff and board, um, you know, I was out for a little bit, I recovered from hip surgery and getting around a lot better now, but I appreciate, uh, all the staff taking time covering, um, and, uh, running the last board meeting in my, uh, in my absence, so just not much appreciation for that. Uh, congratulations Destination Imagination Team, who, uh, once again, doing a amazing job representing our school district. Um, and I think there was articles in student news more recently, and it's, uh, fun seeing pictures of students, always very, very happy and involved. Thanks, uh, to the high school staff, it's been an ongoing process, I know that they're in their WASP process. Um, and, uh, thanks to Dr. Aldman, walking in the doors, new principal, and having that standing at the doorstep is quite a heavy lift. But, uh, he's doing a great job, and I know they've been in their committees and having really rich discussions, and I look forward to, uh, uh, being a part of the previous that WASP will come out to shortly. Um, and we attended, uh, the Boys and Girls Club Community Breakfast, uh, in the partnerships, I think Peggy was there as well. Um, and getting just a great opportunities to see all the partnerships that exist in the city, so, um, with that, that's my basic call.
Um, we're excited, I think as a district, to be hosting the Green Ribbon Awards Ceremony next week, and talk the role on Monday, so that's, uh, very positive, which we've been looking forward to for some time, just couldn't make a public announcement quite yet. Um, and we had our auditors here last week for a mini-year audit, and that went very well, and we saw a few upscending items we needed to get up to send, but it was, uh, all of our approved and increased protocols and procedures have had a positive impact for us. Yes.
Hi, just a couple, uh, updates from instruction. Uh, as, as you know, Julius Fuppens is coming, um, uh, we believe that registration will close next week for more than halfway filled, which is very exciting. Um, so, uh, just a reminder, if you have RSP to the community, please sign up. Um, and GSS implementation team met last week, we boxed, uh, with our K-12 classrooms and observed science. Um, and, um, gender clue medicine, a rollover activity, so we all know why, um, my favorite soap comes like, uh, most when you put it in the microwave. Um, are, we also led a math instructional walk, we're starting to look at major math clusters, so we really, uh, hone in and design, um, what, where we begin with iteration, and our GLCs are supporting with that, and our principals are doing an extraordinary job of planning for next year, so thank you.
Our consent calendar, are there any items that board members need to pull up? Our motion then to approve our consent calendar items A through L. Any clarifying questions yet? Then, um, our favor consent calendar is presented.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask for a public comment.
Any public comment on the consent calendar?
A little backwards, but. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very spivey. Our next item is our, we have several information items, and the first is update on the board government's protocols. And we have that meeting, especially in like, this is, uh, do you want to stick this up?
Sure, I'll just, uh, one, I, one of the goals that I had set out, uh, when I first came into the district was to sit down with the board and establish and will clear protocols that uh, help us work together efficiently and effectively. Uh, that took place in November of, until sixteen. Uh, one of the protocols that we agreed to, the digital protocol, was to revisit them on an annual basis, and I appreciate it again, the board taking the time to do that. Um, and so, uh, tonight, it's simply just, um, in the agenda, the, the protocols and the edits that we came up with, uh, or you came up with as a board, um, that are going to be able to put together, and it's your protocol, so.
So the, as you can see on the first page, there were three full ones, and then the one addition that we added that was really important, and so, uh, looking at the first one, promotions and deliberations, which is, um, page eighty-two. Just, uh, and then obviously, I just messed that up, there's a consent calendar, where we have the presentation items, and then probably can put board member questions, and I think that's, uh, probably something we're still refining, so that it's really a question, question, and doesn't then end up being discussions, because then that's the important part. Then after that, uh, we have motions, and then we can, then we can go on with our discussion, uh, deliberate and vote. So I think that's probably the, the area that we're still, uh, that we get a little crossover in.
Resigning.
Refining, right. So that's why we do attention to that one.
Then the special thing with general, you call it stuff too.
Right, because so often when you, if you're not just asking a clarifying question, it gives, it causes that line. So it's, I mean, it's all right, you can stand by it, it's just waiting for a few seconds. Announcements, requests, and board reports, and I was just noticing when I went through this, that I think if our next go-around with this, it would end up with, uh, page eighty-one, eighty-one, that we're still gonna need to reorganize this a bit, because what we were trying to do is just what we did tonight. That this, the time of board reports in this part of the meeting is just if we attended something that's a committee assignment. And then we save our announcements and requests till the end, so I just, I guess when we went over this, that our special meeting definitely escaped me, as far as that we need to move it to a different, uh, column. So that, um, yeah, because we've all, we have that other column now, more, um, more requests, uh, that comes at the end of the last item at the end of the year. I would just, I made a couple, just, that's the next one, request for items for next meeting, request for information, general comments. So then we'll just slide announcements and requests into that to make sure that we were, okay, so I didn't, I didn't catch any of them, yeah, that our special meeting had needed to, uh, move it to a different section. Then the next one, uh, in addition to what discussed implementing a new protocol regarding association requests for meetings with individual board members. And so what we, um, because of the concern of, um, Thran Act issues, what we put in here. So I want to draw your attention to this for both Missy and Margaret, please. Uh, each association is provided the opportunity to provide updates to the board each board meeting. So like tonight, we really were more expansive with the comments, that's just the perfect time, so that you, all of us here at the same time. And you can certainly have as much time to make those comments as you need to, and to bring issues to us that you want to surface. In addition, association presidents will have an opportunity to provide updates to the board in the weekly updates, so those are the written updates that we receive. So we wanted to add that, so that you can communicate, uh, in between meetings, uh, each weekly update.
So we would email the board with a weekly data?
No, it would go through, it goes to Dr. Dory's office, and it's made up of component parts, so you're, you will be added to that. Uh, if it's clarified, he, he's just attaching it. Right, no, just adding it, same as the principals we played, and you have to press, right? Okay, and, uh, um, page eighty-two, I think we're also, we did discuss this, and the meeting requests for items for next meetings or future topics, that, uh, we reach consensus if that comes up, so that, because we're trying to stay aware of what, of any single board member might be asking as far as, like, staff times, what would be involved with that, where it's headed, and so we can at least, um, Dory, we're gonna move forward with it before we, uh, take that direction.
Are you gonna add them where consensus on there, on those protocols?
Well, you can add it, add it at the next time of the year.
Yeah, so it's, it doubled up, and that's where we're, because, uh,
Right, because it's on eighty-two, it's on eighty-two, it's.
It's on eighty, it's on eighty-one, we're gonna talk about consensus.
Okay.
So we add the topic, but the process is reflected in board member notices, request board reports.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Pull those apart, like what Jan was saying.
Yes.
So it's clear, but that's where the process lies.
And, and the purpose of that is not to speak too much if something, if it isn't. Well, we all had a request, but if we all had an individual request, and there wasn't, and other, you know, three of the board members went to say, oh, we, whatever, we'll do that. Though we discuss it here, but it comes up in the meeting before we, because they would, you know.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to.
What about, um, if a board member, if it's too much time for the staff, or do we predict the research? We didn't address that specifically, other than that last item we added, and I think we have left with the. So it's on page eighty-three, and that's, uh, does, you see, no, it's on, where is it? I'm visiting other districts, it's an eighty. By the way, it's on eighty-two, visiting programs, schools professional development outside of LBSD, so this doesn't, isn't exactly what you're saying as far as researching on your own. But this is just asking for courtesy notice, if you're going to visit, um, something in another district. But as far as that is researching, um.
Well, simply, you know, the protocol for, uh, it's protocol for adding an agenda to the board item, since this board item would be a request of superintendent to president to add to the agenda. So before it can be discussed in a formal setting, it would need to be added as an agenda item, so I think, uh, the protocol would allow for this, in interest to be added to the agenda at the end of the meeting as well, before it can be discussed and research can be done, so that the determination would be that way, as to timely, time, and it should be.
And then I just, I know we've had a discussion, uh, on page eighty-one, this is not highlighted on the cover page, but beginning of questions answered on items on the agenda before meeting. And again, we're really trying to refine that, so that we, sometimes I know, I mean, I shared this with some board, and we get busy, and we may not get to, you know, fully research, and again, be pretty close to the meeting, because that's just what happens with the human nature. And so, but the ideal is, is that get those questions in on Monday, if possible, and then, um, those will be shared with the rest of the board, so that we all have the same information. Uh, it's not specifically, um, addressed in here, but I know it's just, it's certainly, you can ask those questions again at the meeting, even if you get the answers, so that then, uh, it's shared for the benefit of the public, or it's in the record. So it doesn't mean, it's not an attempt to not have question during the meeting, it's an attempt to make sure that, that question can be answered, and then everybody gets the benefit of, of hearing that additional information. So is that, you feel that's what we, that's, yeah.
A couple of things came up, where Ben went and took something off, right, where we did, other creation was embarrassing.
We've done, I haven't seen, so this is still a decade ago, and it's better to find that out at the time of the meeting, or if they can supply the information by Tuesday night, that's in today. Oh, we were discussing, okay, well, I've been trying to, my, see, my remains flopped over discussions, sorry. So, who submitted a card for this, Mr. Mills?
Oh, yeah.
My name's Howard Hills. I'd like to direct the board's attention, if it has a mind to, to page P five. The paragraph there on the instructions for presenting the board appearance is relevant to this issue of the protocol. Look at that second par, uh, paragraph, the second sentence says, um, "The board is a policymaking body whose actions are guided by the district's vision, mission, and goals." And, um, that sentence has always bothered me, and in the context of these protocols, I think it's, it's, um, uh, appropriate to point out that the district has no existence separate from the board. The, the board is not a policymaking body, it's an legislative agency under state education code. So this sentence is, the court sort of indicates that the board is here to sort of, you know, provide a little bit of oversight and guidance and whatnot. You are the law, you are representatives, each of you have a role to advance constituent interests and do constituent services with respect to matters that are pending in the school district. Each of you, uh, individually is a representative that has a responsibility and duty to represent the people who voted for you. And, um, the district, you know, this kind of model of like the federal model, like the superintendent is a co-equal branch of government and you guys are kind of, you know, on, on the same plane of mutuality or whatever, that is all wrong. Uh, under the education code, the superintendent doesn't exist, he doesn't have any authority independent of the board. The only authorities that the superintendent has are those that you delegate to the superintendent. And even if you delegate all of your responsibilities to him, you remain, or to the superintendent, you remain legally responsible and the district remains legally liable for how the delegated powers are exercised and it comes back to you. So you can delegate what you want to the superintendent or to the staff and you can say, you know, um, they're doing it, we're not doing it. But in the end, legally and, um, in terms of your responsibility, it's you, everything that happens. So, you know, uh, again, it's, the, the, what you're doing here with this exercise in protocols is really important and I'm really excited by it. I think it's great that you're doing it. Um, I think that, um, you need to go deeper and you need to have more critical thinking about a lot of these issues that are addressed in the protocols. And, um, you know, uh, uh, I don't have time to go through it, but I noticed on a lot of these, I, I would have a lot of comments about each one of these. Uh, I'm really interested in this stuff, this stuff really excites me, it's parliamentary and it's legal. And, uh, but I think the fact that you're doing it and that you're improving it is really important and, um, I encourage it. And, um, I'm out of time, so I'm gonna, um, actually finish before I get buzzed. But I would like to continue a discussion about this because I think it's really great that you're improving your institutional capacity by going through this exercise.
Any other public comment on this information item?
I do have more special.
I thought, I thought, let me say that we went through protocol, I'd like next turn to Jamie Community. Cause when they cover it, you didn't cover it all, and either because of summer or after the next election, but there's some stuff where I need to do that, or questions. That's, everything that we worked on, I, I felt very clear and I, I refer back to it.
I think it's a good, it's a good practice, and I appreciate the way that, I appreciate the way it fell out. Okay, our next information item, third quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement.
This is our routine, uh, report to the county of our Williams legislation assignment and we have no Williams complaints to report.
Any public comment on this item? Both questions are certification, I think it's on there tonight, so we, um, thank you. Our next information item is a monthly financial update.
Thank President Baker for the board. Not much has changed in this, this is as of the end of February. It does reflect our new second interim numbers. Uh, one area that I would like to point out and highlight, however, is this information we just got from our actuarial study that we had done, um, it's in draft form. However, it does show that in years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we will be at one hundred percent funded of our other post employment benefits trust. So, um, you will see that in future reports. Unfortunately, this order with reports from fourth quarter still, because we didn't get any time for this board meeting. Um, but everything's moving in a positive direction, we start to work on year end close. And like I said, we wrapped up our audit last week, which is always good. And thanks to everyone who's contributed.
So that's a mid-year until they, they don't come to us and report on that.
We will have a, we will have a report, a staff report, but they report on the annual audit, I guess.
Any public comment? Any, um, more questions?
Thank you.
Again, I appreciate the details. Especially on the transfers.
Yeah.
Well, it is critical. Uh, action items this evening, item sixteen, approval to award a three-year contract to Hanover Research for the twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one school years, Dr. Digo.
Thank you. So this, uh, is a three-year contract with Hanover, however, um, we'd like to, uh, take it, our commitment year by year. So we, we have an opt-out, um, option with sixty days of written notice for this three-year contract. So I think it's really important that we highlight. In addition, um, the cost that's listed, um, we were just notified that if we sign before May fifteenth, we'd get five percent off. So, um, well, it's a little bit less than this.
Public comment?
No, no questions. Did you say, or do you do the surveys for us? They totally do it out there, it's a, a new one that we've asked for.
Correct, so I will, that will be under a separate contract, however.
Oh, it's kind of just.
No, because this contract is for individual queues and they're already in a queue right now, meaning they're already doing the elk count, so.
We can't change the queue.
Unfortunately, they're in the midst of the, the, um, climate survey data and it just closed this last meeting, so we will have to, um, engage in a separate contract, um, in order for us to, to accomplish the survey, which sucks.
In the time we need, because it can't go in a queue because it.
Correct, because it, it push-up will, I think, that will work.
Right.
Great question.
Did you, did you have a question? Want to say something, so, Carol? Uh, more discussion, I appreciate the, uh, I, I actually appreciate this, I think this is something that, um, harm to do ourselves, we need to look at this. So having hiring someone, um, to tailor it is, is wise, which is, appreciate that.
Having spent time talking to specialists at U C L A, it gives a very, it's a very certain mindset. But that's something we have to employ in every school district, so it's a whole lot of, it's outsourced to our life.
Maybe, though, see if satisfied with it, but they're done stating, or something, so maybe that's why we'll continue.
At some point, and it doesn't need to be right away, can we have a list of what's in the queue?
Of course.
Any other court discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Opposed, here's my vote. Uh, action item seventeen, approval of curriculum committee recommendation for textbook adoption for Laguna Beach High School Mandarin Chinese four honors course. Dr. Digo.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Scannar, Mandarin teacher at the high school, Anne Thurston, um, spoke at curriculum council. She proposed a textbook that could be used with, uh, um, Mandarin four H and we'd like to bring this forward for your consideration.
Public comment on the side?
This is my last, I'm gonna leave, okay? I took Mandarin at Laguna Beach High School in nineteen sixty-eight. I didn't do very well, so don't ask me to, speaking of it, but, um, uh, I think it's a great thing to do with Mandarin. And, um, I wanted to just say that, um, uh, because of the subject of students and, and, um, the fact that they're, they have access to this course, uh, and kind of relating it back to the wonderful report that was given earlier, the subject about the, um, the, uh, study session, um, I just, um, I applaud and encourage this program and I think things that are being done for the students are great. And I just wanted to add here that, um, when we talk about the study session and different constituents and stakeholders and whatnot, that should be included in the process. I forgot to mention, in addition, the teachers across by the place, students. And last meeting, uh, board member, Rickers, you mentioned the senate that's been created. I think if you're gonna go forward with that process, um, you ought to, um, get the senate involved, the student government involved, you should talk about the elections and everything. So the point is, this item on the agenda about the Mandarin sort of got me focused, thinking on the students and the great things you guys are doing for the students. And I just think that's another great thing you can do for the students. And while, I think the community would really like to know what the students think about it. And, um, I know there was some discussion, but at any rate, um, I just wanted to sort of bootleg that issue, want to do a discussion of how great I think this Mandarin program is.
Any other public comment on this item? Any more questions?
Do they not have a textbook at all now?
We don't have this class yet.
Thank you.
Or in, or, or, the next placement.
The only reason I ask that is because, you know, Spanish didn't have a textbook until three years.
Right, yeah.
So that's, that's actually the shit that's in that, but the instructor didn't choose to have.
That's actually, yeah.
And, and that was tie calendar, and it's their, their kids who want to, and so they can get a textbook and it's hard early on, but they can't take college class because we're not in school. So they, cause they're so excited about the topic, right, so they wanted to, to link ahead.
Any other questions? Motion, somebody, second. Any discussion now?
I am really pleased that she's picking the textbook because she will like it then. I think it's hard when it comes to somebody else, chosen, thinking it'll be good for you to study.
Just to note, if you read it in the background, the textbook has been out there on display as required from, uh, March twenty-eighth through today. So it's available for, for that examination. Any more discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Hi, opposed, Terry Spilew. Action item eighteen, approval of job description teacher on special assignment for technology.
So this is not a new position, this is a position that's existed, it was probably the first TOSA position that we had in the district. And it was, it's been in place so long that it didn't have a job description. So as we've been reevaluating, um, you know, kind of our TOSA's and we're in the process of applying those positions now, we have two part-time technology TOSA's, and so we thought it would be nice to have a job description, uh, to really explain what they do. And they both focus on different, um, aspects of technology, so the job description is more general in nature. Um, and with technology as we know it, change, changes and evolves, so we want to be, not have to bring this back to you, um, constantly. So, um, we're hoping for you the job description for technology TOSA.
Public comment? No questions?
Would this change if it was a full-time person?
I, I don't think the essential duties would change, I think they would just do more of what we're asking. Um, but certainly if that was a consideration, they would probably bring it back.
Carol, any discussion? So, but this is, so this really is just getting some on the books, we, I mean, how are you doing?
And it has been repo, it's been reposted, so what we are onto is two-year increments for traditionally for the TOSA jobs.
Okay.
And we repost them, reply them, unless we, uh, have determined otherwise, so, so we'll run the year. The TOSA position, we qualify, we're very clear, it's a one-year commitment, everything else is a two-year commitment unless something falls out.
Thank you. Any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Opposed, here's my vote. Action item nineteen, approval agreement with the law firm of Fagan, Friesman, and Bullcross for general legal services to the county, we should apply school district structural services office with a not exceed amount of thirty thousand.
Yes, thank you. So we're hoping this, this will cover student services, private courts, and special education.
Public comment? Or questions? This, this, we've already used them, correct, and that's been given very helpful.
We use Peter Fagan of Fagan for our board protocol.
Okay, and then.
And, um, we used him for another, um, request that had come across and it just, it's on a thirty thousand expenditure, it's just to set aside for us attorney's fee. But it's just another attorney to have to space the questions we have, yeah.
Motion for, so, any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Opposed, Terry Spilew. Action item twenty, approval agreement with contracted services with community services LLC to perform property tax forecasts and information services for a fixed fee of five thousand dollars. Okay, so your minute.
Thank you, President Pickers. Uh, this came out of a, uh, idea we had in Joint Management Committee, uh, J M C. Regarding the, a lot of that had to do with the uncertainty looking forward at potential impacts of, let's say, let's say federal programs, local, uh, property tax. So, um, these firms exist, there were a lot of water districts, cities and counties to do property tax and other tax projections for them. They come in five-year increments, so you, you pay for one year and you'll get a five-year projection. And, um, given the low cost of this, with the amount of impact a property tax projection could have on our district, uh, we're recommending that we at least try this out, see how accurate their forecast projections are. So that, um, we, uh, make sure that the eighty-seven percent that we do get from local property taxes is very accurate.
Public comment? Questions from the board?
Do you have any information about how accurate they've been in the past? I mean, we have an account for other water districts, et cetera.
Yes, plus or minus one percent.
Oh, okay.
And usually they give more conservative projections.
Wonder. Motion, please, and someone, a circuit. Carol, discussion? I just think this is a good idea and I think, I don't think the fact that you asked, that you have an C group and that they were supportive of it, I think it's something that, especially if you say eighty-seven percent of our budget, um, so we're more likely to do it. So I appreciate you.
Appreciate this.
I think we have, um, the county is not, you know, it doesn't always give us the best information. And it's also not always time, but it's like this, it would be good to see just something, it's so crucial. And that is, is, we're part of the predictions out to two, three years.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other decision? On favor?
Hi.
Opposed, Terry Spilew. Next action item twenty-one, approval to award contract to Durham School Services, LP, with school transportation services on a unit cost basis for the twenty eighteen, nineteen fiscal year in an amount that could exceed one million five hundred twenty-five thousand.
I'll, I'll present, President Pickers, but I brought Ryan up in case there's any specific questions on B K L. He worked with county legal counsel on the bid, but this was the last year of a five-year term that we're allowed to renew and extend bids. Uh, we did have two, two, five bidders, Durham being one of them as the most, lowest responsive response of bidders. And with that, if you have to take any questions, or if I don't really ask, I'll pass up the question.
So is he presenting beyond that right now, or? Public? Yes, public comment, and I have a card from Mike, Michael Trot.
Oh, I thought he was sticking up. Oh, okay.
He's up to answer questions.
Okay, so, hey guys, my name is Mike Trotter, appreciate you guys taking a minute out to, to hear what I have to say. But, um, so, I'm not sure how many of you are aware of this, but my children, when they were in kindergarten, um, they were using the bus every day. And then the first time they ever took it home, the school bus driver let them off the wrong stop. Again, uh, luckily that happened to be the Boys and Girls Club, so someone got in touch with my wife and she was able to get them. But, again, we had that issue and then a friend of ours, the very first day of school this year, let them off at the wrong Boys and Girls Club, a first grader. So, I know that we're not totally satisfied with Durham, they make the most business sense in terms of their bid, I get that, we gotta do, we gotta do. However, I'm not sure if we could, uh, enforce some strong protocols with them in terms of better outcomes with these young children. Or if we could tie any type of, um, performance to their, to their compensation. Because we can't have kindergartners getting let off at the wrong stop, I mean, that's just unacceptable. So, um, that's what I wanted to bring to your attention. Again, I know it makes, it makes the most business sense, but I don't think we can allow this to happen anymore. Thanks.
Can you call that? Um, I think I should have had more in my presentation because this needed slightly more than the amount we had previously with Durham. Uh, but it includes all new compressed natural gas buses with seatbelts and cameras on the buses. So we are trying to implement more, um, safety protocols related to our busing. Certainly, um, any, any sort of, uh, failure of our transportation company, um, dropping off kids or mistreatments on the bus, um, is not going to be tolerated by the school district and we will take appropriate action with them. However, it's not built into any sort of performance paid for the drivers.
Do you think it's?
I was just gonna say, is there any way that, you know, really have some strong protocols with them in terms of checking their tags before they get off the bus, and that sort of thing?
We follow, we'll follow up with Durham on all of these items.
Especially dealing with the levels.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, that's, because that's.
We have the discussion each summer before. Unfortunately, we'll still have issues, but it's a matter of us following up with our transportation coordinator.
And at the beginning of school, it's really scary. I mean, that's a very dark place.
Almost can't follow it enough. We need to stay off.
Yeah, we just can't, you know, just complain. I've thought about that with my old children.
Any other comment? More questions? What? Motion please in some other circuit?
Oh. Not for right now, but I know I was looking at what a big part of the budget transportation is from stall school districts. And I saw that in Boston, M I T helped them come up with a different schedule that saved them three to four million dollars. And I wondered if we ever look at making the schedule a little bit different. I know we go out to, listen, Aliso Viejo, McCannion, twice those first split, and perhaps that needs to be done to balance the elementary schools. But I'm just throwing out if there's, if there's things we could look at. I mean, we don't have the benefit of M I T helping us, but if somebody wanted to take on looking at the bus schedules and if they could be better.
We look at it at least annually.
Hi, Beth. Do we have the same drivers every year, or do they rotate? Do we?
For the most part, the same.
That's a question, sorry, not a question.
For the most part, we do have the same drivers.
Because having similar drivers helps, because they know the routes. You feel more comfortable as a parent. My kids are older, but I remember.
It was the same driver.
Okay. Okay.
Did you, just a question to you.
Yes.
Is that okay, can I ask? I know, I've never had problems. Well, within a twelve-year, you, did you, did you call Durham? Did you call Durham? Did you call the district? Did you call the school when this happened?
Oh, yeah, we worked through Mr. Duddy on that one.
Okay. And then, and then hopefully, Chris, I assume you then, yeah. So, that's just, that's, I'm sorry.
Because we don't want it to happen to anything.
That is, I totally. Yeah. That's scary as a parent, isn't it?
Yeah.
See, and then. Right, that was good. Hopefully, we can reach.
I said, I had two more kids that had similar experiences, and they didn't like it. And they just, right, I felt like more under-respect, and explaining it to them. But not like a regular.
But, but sometimes the bus drivers have substitutes, too. Of course, they get sick, and I know that's when I, I've had problems. I mean, I had one dropped off here at the district office. This bus driver had no clue for, for drops. So.
Well, I can tell you, Durham takes this fairly seriously. When we get on the phone and call, we know that this contract is not small by any means. And so, they, they have some new staff that are, for example, tracking when buses are running behind and what the reasoning was for the bus running behind. And so, I just received a spreadsheet just this morning that Joe shared, over the last roughly year. Essentially, when the bus is running late, what was the cause that the bus driver reported, so that they have that as a charge. But prior to that, they don't have those laws. So, I know that they're also working to improve their practices, and there's never an excuse to drop a student off at the wrong spot. We're going to the kids, and we need to be better about that. That's a systems and protocol thing that we can obviously work with Durham, ensure that their systems and protocol are working. And we do have sub-drivers, that doesn't exclude them from, also not training them on systems and protocol. So, again, we're, we're having them provide that service on our behalf. There's an expectation that they provide it to the level that we expect. So, that's where we walk in and say, those are contractors, here's the expectation. You need to provide this, and we need to work this, work through this, if these mistakes don't happen.
I appreciate the seatbelts and the camera. Should, those should help. I mean, three years, we had folks asking, have seatbelts on the buses? But they, they finally got there, so. The, I think that the comment, so the comment was heard loud and clear, and I feel confident that knowing what you've been doing for us in other areas, we'll follow up on that significantly with Durham. I don't know what their practices, I mean, they handle their own personnel people, but I do know that there have been bus drivers that they release. And we, and we don't, and we're not informed of reasons, because that's their own precedent. So, I mean, if you emphasize that, like, they will be solid.
It's not for Durham, the buses, they call, the bus driver actually called them, and they realized that they're not the top shop.
Right.
So, they're playing, they were on top of it, and fixed it, but it's still.
Right. Right.
Okay, any other discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Here's Spargo. Our next item, action item twenty-two, approval to award contract to American Logistics Company LLC for individualized transportation services on a unit cost basis for the twenty eighteen-nineteen fiscal year in an amount not exceeding three hundred fifty thousand.
President Vickers, we've been working with this similar to Durham, and we've been working with American Logistics historically, to come up to the five-year term of their bid. They provide the individualized service transport for our students with special needs. So, very specialized vehicles that they need to use to get those students, for the most part, out of our district boundary. This is the same not to exceed fee that you've seen each year, the past few years at least. So, they came in with another competitive bid, and they were our lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Other comment? Any more questions? Motion please in some other circuit? Now, discussion? I know that your comments on the not accepting the lowest bid, that what they do is because they didn't have the power to put on the buses to meet the needs.
Yes, they couldn't transport all the kids up the middle.
And just echoing on the concerns from a parent with the way of transportation, it's even more critical. So, you have a communication system with them, and they've been.
Actually, Mrs. White and Mrs. Nash work with them quite a bit, and I believe you've been very satisfied with their service.
Yeah, I can certainly speak to that. I mean, they will not allow a kid to use the vehicle unless it's in the agreed-to address or personnel that we designated on the document. So, they've been really good about that. That's pretty customized care for our specialty students, some that are traveling outside. Sometimes it's a pretty long ride. We try to minimize it, and.
I don't mean it's anything to do with what you've told us, just for some of the services that are there, their distance. So, it's, and it's a, you know, challenging situation. And you said, he taps on that through the.
Absolutely. Mrs. Nash spends that percentage every day, every day, communicating transportation. We don't go home until it's, it's.
Any other discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Here's Spargo. And that was our item, or remember, request for items due to the next meeting, request for information or general comments.
I don't know. I would like to thank Committee of Margaret specifically for providing some knowledge, appreciate that. It's nice that we have our best. And then, I would like to take a, a walk down memory lane that I used to, in summers, follow the mosquito fogger on my banana bike. In the evenings, sniffing in, I'm sure it was deet, but it was the best smell ever. So, I'm just saying, I, I appreciate those, not kidding you guys, that's why I am where I am. I appreciate those parents coming in.
And, and Jeffrey Ryan, I just have a question. If, as far as. As far as, yeah, as far as. As far as, as bidding process, if, do we have to accept the lowest bidder? Or can we ask, can we explore the non-toxic options?
Unfortunately, the public contract that requires to take the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And so, in that case, you know, exactly if it can choose who we know we're the contractor, we could always review it is, and.
It, but the bid does include an add-aliment for organic options. So, the lowest bidder, you could add that on to whoever the lowest bidder is.
And I, I do. So, we can change the requirement in the bid.
In the bid, which we've done.
I don't know.
It's in the.
So, it could be.
It's already built into the bid for us, and that is an option, so.
Okay. So, that could still be the lowest responsible.
You would, right.
So, it's still the lowest.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So, we'll no more make better bids.
Yeah, I just, because I just didn't know how.
Where they're close. What's the bidding opening?
May third.
May third, sorry.
Yes, I just didn't know, I didn't know how we were tied that way, so that thing.
Right, so I answered it. Right, you'll have the option to exercise, the option to use the non-toxic methods to perform the landscape availability. But as far as the selection contractor, we're at.
Right, okay, that's in that.
Who still provides that service.
Right, okay.
But all the bidders will provide that altered pricing.
Growing up in Monsanto's backyard, I appreciate all of this, thank you. I, yeah, thank you, Kedder. I agree. I, my, my brother and his wife had their house, they were not allowed to live in it. It was four, completely cordoned off in Texas because of spreading the things that they shouldn't. And they found out that and moved out immediately, leave, leave everything there. And in Texas, if you're an attorney, which both my brother and his wife were, you have to state if you don't pay your house payment. And they were, they had to keep paying their house payment on a house that no one could give them to or live in. And so, they have fed me lots and lots of information about toxins. She works on board in Texas with toxicity. So, we can work on this one.
I just wanted to make a comment. Have you noticed that a number of our conferences were ramifications this time? The, we do make every dollar to give those things more time to manage, but this time we just haven't paid enough. So, it was, it was mobile. I noticed in the passing of Von Bennett, and in that situation, we looked at the vendors, do we send a control system district? Would that be appropriate? We did, we did send a card. I got a symposium, we were out there.
Okay.
And going through that information that was shared with us when it appeared on Seattle, I, and their policy, I just noted in that, that it does not excuse the absence. It clearly indicates that it's not an excused absence. And that, and I thought it was very significant, that then the instructor may or may not let the student make up the work. And so, I was not certain after that was presented to us as something we would want to do here, that that might not be something that we would want to do here. And also, that if the students left the campus, that they connected with the police department, so they did all of all of the things, which I'm sure our students, our parents would have just done also. So, I thought it was interesting that I, that it wasn't maybe all it was thought to be as far as, for any expression, and walking out. One, just one comment. I keep coming across continual information on the arm from screens of all various kinds. And not only with socialized isolation and those kind of social emotional issues, but also on physical issues, issues with eyes, issues with disruption of sleep, and issues with head and neck. And it just seems that it's, it's not directed just at students. It's directed at adults also, because it uses so extensive, but I just think that.
I thought you meant like squeeze.
Those all the bugs out.
She's back to, she's back to the bugs.
Talk about.
I'm, I'm getting mosquito love. I'm getting mosquito love.
So, and, and it's just continual exposure. And then again, I read today, you read it today, that about stand up, don't sit down all the time. And it's, was Brainstem, right? Brainstem, it's pretty interesting. We talk about things that now research shows us that we didn't know about. So, now we can change practices, as we've sat here for an hour now. Which is not, which is not, not recommended. So, it's really, and how do we change, how do we change all those cultural practices where it's, you know, if you, if you don't do what's conventional, it's, you know, not well thought of. So, it's really something that maybe with our, at least with our furniture now, if students can move around more, that helps. Or we can fidget. We don't constantly, we're gonna fidget it. So, appreciate the indulgence. And that and I, someone just said that about the spotter. I got to work in my uncle's gas station, Henson Beach. And I was in high school. And I thought it smelled wonderful. Think how bad it is. I used to chase the mustard with a fish cream truck. I guess it was the best thing to get to do. So, we have a meeting on Tuesday, May eighth, at eight, in the morning at six, and motion for Dr. Self. On favor?
Hi.
Oppose?